April 11th, 2016, school board meeting. All board members are present. Please stand and recite the pledge with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move approval of the agenda, I'd like to call for a closed session after tonight's meeting for negotiations upon conclusion of tonight's school board meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. Would someone like to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? All right. That brings us to recognition of students, staff, and public, and we have a resolution regarding the Volunteer Recognition Month. Would someone like to move that resolution?
The result is the school board of Hennepin School district adopt the attached proclamation declaring April 2016 as Volunteer Recognition Month in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Thank you. I'll read the proclamation and then we will vote. Whereas the care and commitment and hard work of our world-class diverse volunteers have made our schools more effective places in which to learn, and whereas volunteers have enriched and expanded the learning opportunities available to learners of all ages and abilities, and whereas volunteerism is a living lesson that embodies a spirit of giving and a spirit of lifelong learning, and whereas we wish to celebrate the many gifts of the thousands of volunteers contributing to the Bloomington Public Schools and our programs for children, youth, and adults. Now therefore, we members of the Bloomington School Board proclaim that April 2016 be observed as Volunteer Recognition Month in the Bloomington Public Schools. Is there any discussion about that? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have Debbie Belfry here to introduce others, and I believe you have a PowerPoint to share with us. Thank you.
Yes, we do. Good evening, school board, board chair, and superintendent Fujitaki. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm here with Gina Carpenter. She is going to be doing part of the report of volunteers that serve our district, and we will be having Sue Martel and Mary Jo Bayless introducing some guest speakers tonight.
Well, good evening. We live in a great state of Minnesota. I like this version of our own Minnesota Abbey Road. And according to the Corporation for National and Community Service, Minnesota is number one in volunteering in the nation. That means 100, 1.5 million of us are volunteering somewhere in the state at this moment, and I think that's pretty amazing to be number four in the country. But Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Blooming together for the large cities statewide are number two throughout the whole country. We have 35.3 percent of our residents volunteering, and you can take a look at the numbers there. That's almost a million volunteers just in the metro area, 25 percent volunteering in some capacity in the education field. So it's really amazing to have so many people here tonight to recognize the efforts that our volunteers bring to our students and staff, making the educational experience for our students even better. And that also translates into $2 billion of service that volunteers provide in those three communities.
So we have two different volunteer programs in the district. Our Volunteer Connections works with volunteers for early childhood through grade 12, and Gina will start the presentation talking about Metro South volunteers.
Our Metro South volunteers work with our adult learners. So our adult learners, who are they? Go to the next slide. There are students who are in our English language learning programs, students who have come back to school to earn a GED or an adult diploma, students who are at our Normandale campus in their college prep program, students who are learning about a specific career trade in our career pathways to lead them to sustainable employment, and our participants in our learning exchange class, which is our Adults with Disabilities programming. This last year, we had 152 people help all of our adult learners. That was nearly 1,600 adult students were served. A few of our outstanding volunteers, and we think all of our volunteers are great, but the Minnesota Literacy Council agreed with us that Bob Reed, the gentleman in the middle there, is our Outstanding Volunteer of the Year. Bob has been volunteering with us. He helps with a math class. He does homework lab, and without his help, our students would be missing out a lot on fractions, decimals, and percentages. So he's a great asset for us in helping our students learn those particular math skills. The other volunteers have completed another 1,000 hours of service to our students and to Metro South. Sandy works with our collaborative in Richfield, and she has just reached her 1,000-hour mark. Ellen works with our GED program, and she has now gained 3,000 hours of service for our program. Dorothy works with our homework lab, and she also works with math students. She has now volunteered 1,000 hours for our program. Carol in the bottom is our volunteer at our Eden Prairie Senior Center, volunteering 5,000 hours since she started with us. And Keith, who is our writing volunteer extraordinaire with Metro South, has volunteered 6,000 hours. And to give you an idea of the longevity of the volunteers at Metro South, all of these volunteers have volunteered anywhere between 11 years to 29 years of service to Metro South. So that's an amazing amount of time, and I think it speaks to our quality program and to our volunteer program that they want to stay with us. We know they have many, many choices in the community where they can volunteer. We're just happy that they picked us. One of our programs that we have, we have an employment navigator. That's an AmeriCorps service position with the Minnesota Opportunity Corps. Donghee Hong is our employment navigator this year. He's a native of South Korea, and he came to the United States when he was 13 years old, went to high school in Chicago. He lived with some relatives, and then he went to the University of Minnesota and graduated. And so Donghee works one-to-one with our students in helping them find sustainable employment, preparing for a job interview, creating a resume, and then following up with them. And the unique quality that Donghee brings to our program is he really gives our students, especially our English language learners, the ability for them to know what's possible for them. He's a U of M graduate, and so I think to them, they say, "I can do that too." If Donghee can do this at the age of 13 coming here, he's been here maybe 14 years, they feel confident that they can do that too. We have great business leaders coming into our classes with our career pathways classes, and that provides our students more, you know, experiential learning process. They find out more about a particular business, what an employer is looking for in employee, and that just kind of gives them a leg up when they're ready to get out there into the employment world. And who are our Metro South volunteers? Well, we have volunteers who are college students coming to us with service learning programs. We have volunteers who are working adults. We have volunteers who are retirees, and we have volunteers who want to give back to our program. And the young woman in the upper right in the pink sweater, her name is Tui. And Tui is a University of Minnesota student. She's a senior this year. She will be going to graduate school next year at the U of M. And Tui's mother just received a diploma from Metro South last year, and her father is a current student. So Tui's motivation was to give back to the program that has helped her parents achieve their educational goals, knowing how important it was to her success in academic achievement at the U of M as well.
Many of our volunteers provide school support. We have our PTSA members. Many of you just met Heather Stark. She was here for an earlier meeting, the vice president of the PTSA council. These volunteers also provide a lot of support in school for classroom parties, for carnivals, for book fairs, for field trips, and other tasks that make it a successful school year for our students. We also have volunteers who help during recess, shell books in the media centers, and also serve lunch every day. So we have a lot of volunteers walking in and out of our schools each day, supporting our teachers and students. The Volunteer Connection, early childhood through grade 12, this year have 662 volunteers who supported our students in a variety of programs, and you can read those. Some of them have specific assignments, like our Minnesota Reading Corps members, but many of those volunteers also serve and might work in an after-school program or in an evening program in an additional placement for volunteers. We have programs that have been in existence for 20-plus years. Our Valley View Elementary School rocking readers, our Westwood reading buddies, and those volunteers find their own volunteers to replace anybody that leaves. So we love having them in our buildings, and they just knock on their neighbors' doors and bring along the next volunteer to fill in a lot of those places. We have our Hope for Tomorrow mentors, which started as a program here in the district, serving students, young women in middle school, and that program's expanded to be known as a metro-wide program, and they also serve young men too. These volunteers have already spent 42,198 hours sharing their time with our Bloomington We also have volunteers who provide after-school support. Our community, since 1999, we've, the Volunteer Connection office has coordinated the after-school homework connection programs, and you can see the names of the schools that participate in that program. And we have 70 volunteers that assist 118 students as this year so far, and are happy to have them. They support the learning of our students to get homework assignments done, and also are there to help them with literacy skills and help them learn to continue to expand on the reading that they've done and learned during the school day. In 19, in 2003, the Volunteer Connection started to provide. We were approached by Oxborough Library and Hennepin, through the Hennepin County Library system, and we have volunteers that provide evening support at Oxborough Library. And this year, Penn Lake Library has always tried to make this possible in their facility, and they asked us to start a homework program there in the evening, and also the city of Bloomington contacted us and wanted a homework program at Creekside Community Center. So we have 39 volunteers. Those programs run 5:30 to 7:30, and we have 39 volunteers in those programs, helping 124 students from 23 schools. Because they're in public locations, we welcome any student that needs assistance that comes into those settings. And so of those 23 schools, every single school in Bloomington is represented by a student that's been at one of those three programs in the evening. And we also have started seeing our adult learners who come with their children, and they might also be attending ABE programs. So we're serving the whole family with their, to support their educational needs in the evening. We have volunteers from 22 colleges and universities. We oftentimes have returning Bloomington students that are coming from colleges and universities who are trying to get some practicum hours in because they're in an education program. The largest college we work with is obviously Normandale because it's convenient for everybody. So this year, we've had 270 Normandale Community College students that have come to volunteer in our schools, many of them introduction to education students, but also students in math and engineering courses and things like that where they're coming to do service learning. What's interesting about many of those, we also are seeing again our Bloomington students who are coming to give back because they remember being helped at some point in their career, especially in our homework connection programs. So they're coming to give back. 37 students are at Minnesota State University of Mankato, and we, that program, of course, coordinates with the Normandale Community College two-year program. So we're helping to support our next generation of teachers through that participation also. We also could not do this without our community partners. We partner with nonprofit organizations who bring volunteers into our schools, our business partners, faith communities, city of Bloomington volunteers. As you can see, the list goes on and on for organizations that contact us and want to find a way to volunteer within our schools. So we're happy to have all of them, and we will try to find a placement for every single one of them, and they are happy doing what they do. We also find that many of, the great majority of our volunteers start in one place for an hour to a week, and then they expand their volunteer hours. They love being here, and they feel welcome, and so they usually expand their volunteer placement opportunities while they're with us. We also have one of the highest retention rates of volunteers that come back and serve our students year after year. So together, we, our staff, volunteers, and community partners continue to make a difference.
You know, and I think the culmination for Metro South is the graduation that we have in the middle of June. That represents really the efforts of our volunteers. You know, they, many volunteers come, they get to see the students graduate, and introduced to their students' family and friends, and it's really quite a celebratory event, and just more meaningful when the volunteers are there and recognized for their efforts in helping that student walk down that aisle with that cap and gown.
And with that, we'll answer any questions you may have, as Sue Martel and Mary Jo Bayless will come to the podium with our volunteers who are speaking on behalf of our different groups, and they do the best job talking about our volunteerism.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Baralata, and board, and superintendent Fujitaki. I really appreciate, we all do, taking the time to, to share this time, to recognize these volunteers, and for all our staff for welcoming all these students and community members into our buildings to make really a strong community. We have so many dedicated volunteers, and we have asked a few to join us this evening. Our food service department does such a wonderful job preparing and serving nutritious meals to our students every day, and they are fortunate to have many volunteers to help with those tasks. Representing them this evening is a dedicated lunch server from Washburn Elementary. I would like to introduce a super server, Carol Runner, Running. Carol is a dedicated grandmother and someone who is always, who always brightens your day with great attitude and a smile. She volunteers one, one to two days a week, rain, snow, or shine at Washburn. You gonna say a few words for us? Thank you.
I'm overwhelmed by the audience today. I did not expect anything like this at all. But I just wanted to say, the reason I went into food service is because I'm retired and live alone, and winters get very, very long for me, and especially in Minnesota where we have so many cold, dark days that I don't want to go out of the house. And so I kind of get into a little cocoon, and I found that I need people around me. So I thought, school would be a perfect place to do it because I can work just during the winter, and I can have summers to myself, so I don't have to do it. Well, didn't realize that I would get into such an absolutely wonderful group of people with the cooks at Washburn. They are just, they are so friendly and so fun, and they said that I was the first volunteer they ever celebrated their birthday with, which I thought was kind of cool. But then, after doing that, I still do that, and one day a week, I go into the kindergarten room, which gives me time to be with little kindergarteners because I never got to see my grandson grow up. He, I worked full-time when he was a baby, and so I never got to see him. So now I get my fix of kindergarteners, and I'll tell you, they are special people. So I thank you so much.
You know, I'm very fortunate because I do get to interview every one of these volunteers, 662 of them, and many of them do come to us wanting to make a difference, and not only in the lives of children, but in their own lives, and I hear that a lot. And so it really is a win-win situation for our community members, our teachers, and especially our children. So thank you so much for that. I'd also like to recognize the outstanding student volunteers from Northwestern Health Sciences University. They are super partners with us. They're bright, dedicated, and outstanding role models for Bloomington students. We are fortunate to have these mentors for several trimesters as they complete their journey to career in chiropractic medicine, Asian medicine, or massage therapy. This year, we've had 23 placements from Northwestern Health Sciences. Expanding our evening homework connection, as Debbie had pointed out, has really created a perfect fit for their availability, and it's also been extremely helpful resource for our high school students attending these evening programs. These students are extremely knowledgeable in the areas of math and science, and when these families, we never know who's going to come in the door at the homework connection, and if we don't have help for them, they won't be back. So we have to have a wide variety of volunteers that can really answer any of the questions that they come in. And because of these students, wow, they are just wonderful, because honestly, a high school math student, I'd like to be able to help them, but I probably wouldn't be able to. I'd like to, but I wouldn't. So we have Bloomington students return. We have families that will come all three nights to the homework connection just to work with these students. And because these students are so dedicated, many of them, like, have had, we've had 23 different placements from Northwestern Health Sciences this year, and it's been really, really great. It's a wonderful, wonderful partner. So representing these volunteers tonight is Kylie Bartels and Nate Survee. Kylie is co-president of just a little club, the Applied Kinesiology Club, and she has volunteered 66 hours since last year. And then we have Nate, who is the co-president, not surprisingly enough, of the mentor club, and he's volunteered 173 hours. Now let me tell you, these guys, these students, would much prefer to work with these people than they would with me, because they are much cooler than I could ever be. And they've both completed their
Eighth?
Eighth trimester, which sounds really wonderful because they're busy in their clinicals, but I'm really happy for them, but you know what that means. They're getting close to, you know, getting a real job, right? So I'm very excited for them, but it's very sad for me when college students do move on because they are so dedicated to our kids, and they're so, they're wonderful friends. So if you would like to say a couple words, I will let you have this mic.
Thank you, Sue. I first heard of the Homework Connections program my second semester at Northwestern Health Sciences University, and I think that I can speak for all the mentors and all the tutors when I say that it's truly a testament to the city that this program exists for the You know, for the past two years, I've had the opportunity to work with and get to know a lot of students. You know, some of them came for help with adding and subtracting fractions. Some of them came because they wanted to learn more about college and how to get into one. Personally, I just was procrastinating and didn't want to study for anatomy. But what I found was, you know, a link to a strong community and a strong school district, and I met a lot of, a lot of new friends who, among other things, kind of kept me abreast about what's cool and what's not. So I'd just like to thank everybody that makes this program a success, and it's really a truly unique program, and everyone should be proud of it.
I don't really remember when I started, but it's been a while, two years. And I guess when I started with Volunteer Connections, it was mostly because I, when I was back home, I used to coach and help my siblings with homework, and then when I moved here, it was just school all the time, and I wanted a chance to be around kids again. And you guys all know what it's like to see their face light up when they figure something out, and it's wonderful to help them do that. I expected to help them learn, and I didn't really expect that I would be learning so much, but I really did. It was from the newest slang term in elementary and middle school to words of another language even. So it's been a really great experience, and I will be really sad to have it over. So, thank you.
As you can see, this, this is really, gets really hard for me, being a parent and a grand, I feel parental to all the kids and to all the volunteers and being a grandparent now. It's just, it's just a wonderful opportunity, and I have to thank you for my, this position because it really is very rewarding. So now
Sue, before we introduce Metro South, can you mention Gloria, our student volunteer who won an award this year for her volunteerism?
Oh, Glory Arpaulette is a Jefferson High School student, and she, we nominated her for the Bloomington United for Youth Award, and she received it because she's fabulous, and she works at Olson Elementary in the Homework Connection. So, so any chance I have to get a student, a high school student, I nominate people for as many things as I can because they're sharing their time with us and they're making a difference. So, anyway, I'd like to introduce Mary Jo Bayless, who is the assistant volunteer coordinator for Metro South, and she has my job and has fun like I do. Right?
Thank you very much. Like Sue, I get to do, I have the honor of meeting the greatest people in our community who come to us because they want to make a difference, they want to give back, they want to do something meaningful, and they choose an education site to do that, and they have lots of choices besides that, but they choose us. And so it's my job to find the right spot for them, put them in a room with students who are learning, trying to learn the English language, or working on their GED, or trying to get their adult diploma, and it's, magic happens. It's just amazing to see people who want to give so much and people who need so much come together. So I agree with Sue. It's one of the greatest things. And tonight, I have the honor of introducing you to one of our volunteers who's been with us almost as long as I've been there, which is 10 years, and her name is Jenny Jensen. And Jenny's special. The afternoon students at our school know her as a person that, if they just want to talk to somebody, if they want to practice conversation, and they're feeling uncomfortable with trying out these new words that are so foreign to them, she's the person that they will seek out, and, and Jenny is always so patient and kind. She's approachable and friendly, and she is so great at listening. But what she is best at is helping adults learning our language to find their voice. They have so much to tell us, so much they want to say, and she is able to draw them out and help them find the words they need to express themselves, and it's a wonderful thing. And so we thank you for doing that, and we'd love to hear a few words from you.
It is my honor to represent the 100 volunteers at South Metro. That is an amazing group. I saw those numbers. My goodness, I don't think I could equal that in my lifetime. When I volunteered first, I started out in the reading lab, and then the conversation class, and then back in the reading lab. And because I have a chance to class, and then back in the reading lab. And because I have a chance to converse with these students, I have learned their stories. Many of their stories are tragic, and many of them are, have lost everything to be here. So, it's hard not to be moved by what I hear every week from them. It's, it's really an inspiration that they are here, that they've left everything behind and that they're here. So, it is a lifeline that South Metro throws to them because their common goal is to learn English, either so that they can be employed. Some of them come with professional status in their foreign countries, some of them come with advanced degrees. And they're maybe working in very sub-level where they should be working. But they come here to learn English, and we throw them a lifeline. And there they are. And they're making progress because the program is so well-organized and so well-directed. And I see them making great progress. I think the staff there is phenomenal. They are dedicated, they are caring. I see them spend extra hours with these students, and they make progress. It's really amazing to see. And the staff, led by Mary Jo, greets me by my name every day, has something personal to say to me, is always encouraging, is warm and welcoming. And that's the way I feel when I go there. How would I not love to be there, really? It's a wonderful place to volunteer. It's like I have the world sitting across from me with a face. It's not a statistic on a TV program anymore, it's the face of Munu. It's the face of Elias from Syria, an immigrant. It's the face of the world looking at me. Phenomenal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, just thank you so much for this opportunity to thank our volunteers for the amazing work they do for our school district, our students, and our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to copy the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have you voted on that?
All in favor of the resolution regarding the volunteer recognition? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. I believe we have some students in the audience. Are there some students from Jefferson here? There they are. A requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort that, some that you might attend, our city council meeting, a school board meeting, or a courtroom procedure. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So, I know you're from Jefferson, but would you just state your name and who your teacher is?
My name is Kendall Flashing, and my teacher is Starlene.
Thank you.
My name's Doradona Machado, and my teacher is also Mr. Starlene.
Thank you.
I'm Abby Martinson, and my teacher is Starlene.
My name is Bob Reynolds, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
My name is Luke Graves, and my teacher is Starlene.
I'm John Buckle, and my teacher is Starlene.
I'm Andrew Brolin, and I'm also with Starlene.
Thank you. At the close of this session, or after one hour, whatever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on your agenda, which they are on the counter back there, from one of our administrative cabinet members that are along that wall. Thank you for coming tonight.
And don't try to leave early. There's a lot of ayes from Jefferson here on you.
All right. Is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda?
Could I have my speakers come up, please?
Okay. You have how many speakers?
Just three.
Okay. And since this meeting is the second of three school board sessions this evening, we respectfully ask that you and your speakers stay within a total of about 10 minutes out of respect for the other audience members and our scheduled agenda for the evening.
Will do.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent, Cabinet, and Listening Audience. My name is Gail Gerard. I come to you as a 32-year Bloomington resident. My now-adult children went through our Bloomington schools because we believed in the public education provided by the teachers in this district. I also come to you tonight as a teacher who's given 20 years to this school district. I'll be retiring at the end of this school year, but I'll continue to live and be a taxpayer here in Bloomington. My final teaching year in Bloomington began by being honored in front of this school board for the Minnesota DAP Allan Burton Leadership Award. It's the highest award that a DAP teacher can get in the state of Minnesota. And I was the third one of our Bloomington DAPs to get this award in five years. That's just one of many examples that show the type of teachers we hire in Bloomington. Throughout the years, there have been many teachers who have been recognized in front of this school board, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little upset, emotional, in front of the school board for the value they've had in our schools and their curricular areas. Students who have been educated in our school system by excellent teachers have reached high standards, been brought before this school board to be recognized for their awards, projects, and high achievements, all in large part by the talents and the time poured into them by the dedicated teachers here in Bloomington. The school board publicly sends out messages to our community that Bloomington is a district where the education is one of the best. And yet, we're being offered a 1% raise. I work in special education field. Many know there is much paperwork associated with that job. We have evaluations to complete, which can take many hours. Write up the evaluation reports, develop IEPs with present levels, goals, objectives, progress reports, much more. We do not have the time and the day to perform these tasks. We often stay late or take the work home to do at night or on weekends. On top of this, we have our curriculum we teach, lessons to plan, tests to grade. In my area, I also, on my own time, make adapted devices for my students so they can participate in the activities to the best of their abilities. We have items that are not funded in the district. I and the other DAP teachers, we get $100 a year. You can't buy supplies for $100 a year. But if you come to my room, you're gonna see stuff because on my own time, I've written up grants, I've written out donation letters, and I've gotten the equipment for my students on my own time. I have gone above and beyond. And if I did not do that, and I only worked my contracted hours, my program would be mediocre at best. And I'm not alone. This is going on throughout our district. Teachers make their classrooms the best by going above and beyond. We come in early, we stay late, we help at after-school events. Excuse me? We bring... We, we bring work home, we work nights, we work weekends. All of these things, not part of our contracted pay. My focus, as the other teachers in this district, is to put in these extra hours that we find necessary to provide the best education for our students. And now, here I am. I have less than eight weeks left in my teaching career, which I love. And I am still spending time outside of school, making things for my students, creating things for my other teachers to be able to use beyond. And I'm so sad because I and the rest of the Bloomington educators, I do not see as being valued by our district. When I see a neighboring district that has fund balances lower than Bloomington's 20 million, and they're getting respectful offers, when Richfield has a $3 million fund balance and they're settling for 2.29 and 2.18, and we're being offered 1% and 1%. And our healthcare rates, our insurance rates are going up 4%. I don't get it. And so, I need to know from you. I need to understand. Help us understand.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent, Cabinet, and the Listening Audience. I'm Kirsten Morcom. I teach at Valley View Middle School. And I'm reading something that was submitted from another teacher who wanted to remain anonymous. "The overdue contract settlement affects me because it affects my students. We often teach students the way they treat, that the way they treat others is a reflection of how they feel about themselves. This can also be said about BPS. BPS feels that data is the most important, and that everything can be explained by data, and that people are not as important as this data. As a Bloomington teacher for almost two decades, I've noticed teacher morale decreasing more and more over the years. I most definitely feel that what I do for kids, the things that they will really remember forever, does not matter. Data doesn't often take into account teachable moments and the very hard work it takes to form strong relationships with your students by attending games, events, programs, or just extra time during the school day to stop and talk to a student. Although BPS often says they appreciate their teachers, their actions speak much, much louder. Again and again, the actions of the district confirm how they feel about their teachers. As an elementary specialist, we have often been called prep providers by those at the district level. I believe this is an example of the BPS perception of what teachers do. Specialists provide prep for the real teachers. The term prep providers strips away our value as music, physical, science, or art educators, just as a 1% offer displays the message that we are not worth even the state average increase. I think that BPS is offering a low percent increase because they truly believe that we're expendable."
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent, Cabinet, and the Listening Audience. My name is Ryan Miring, and this is my 12th year teaching math at Jefferson High School. Go Jaguars! And I attended Bloomington Public Schools. I graduated from Kennedy High School in 2000. Go Eagles! And my wife is a 2000 Bloomington-Jefferson graduate. Go Jaguars! I'm here tonight to implore you to put forth an immediate, fair, and equitable contract offer. I can think of many reasons why, but I will focus on the one that affects me the most. That is the issue of work time. I work my hardest to treat all students with respect, to find great ways for students to learn mathematics, and to challenge students to reach higher levels of success than they possibly imagined. To do so requires deep understanding of the learning targets, meticulous lesson planning, and continuous collaboration with my department members. I average 12 hours of work per day, Monday through Thursday. To strive to find a work-life balance, I only work eight and a half hours on Friday, but I do have at minimum five hours of work over the weekend. Since I'm a math teacher, I'll help break that down. That works out to be 12.3 hours of work per contract day. Let's round down to 12 hours and 12 minutes. That means you're getting five hours of work each and every contract day for free. I'm not claiming that no teacher should ever do work outside of his or her contract. It'd be impossible for me to meet my previously mentioned goals that way, and I have always happily worked as much as I do to help my students reach their goals. As a Bloomington boy who became a Bloomington teacher, I never thought I would say this, but it is not the students who show teachers disrespect, but rather, it is the school board and the superintendent.
When I am up, lesson planning and digitizing curriculum, or responding to students and parent emails at midnight, and my wife asks me why I'm still working, this is the first time I've had to actually take pause and ask myself, why? When I'm asked by teacher friends in different districts, why do you still work for a district that won't settle a contract? I ask myself, why? Of course, the answer always comes back to the students. Every moment of time I put in and everything I do for this district, I do for the success of my students. And I'm just one of many, one of the many teachers who do the same thing day in and day out. And that's why teachers in Bloomington deserve to feel valued by this school board. And that's why Bloomington teachers deserve to be respected by the school board. And finally, that's why Bloomington teachers deserve to have a fair and equitable contract now. Thank you.
Well, your time's already, you're over time already, but, but go ahead. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, School Board Members. My name is Julie Ellis. I've been teaching middle school band at Valley View since 2003. This past year, I was also given the honor of being part of the 5th grade instrumental team, but will be returning to Valley View Middle School for the coming fall. I grew up in New Prague and was delighted when I got a job near home right after undergrad. But it was teaching in a small town where I was tasked with doing high school and middle school that made me realize that middle school is where I belong. So, I jumped at the chance when the job in 2003 came open at Valley View Middle School and thought, fantastic. I never thought in a million years I would get the job. I never thought that I was good enough to work for a place like this. When I shared with my colleagues down south where I was going, I was met with a mix of awe and envy. I and they thought that I had gotten the golden ticket, not from a monetary standpoint, but from the fact that it was truly a mark of distinction to get an offer from a place like Bloomington. Congratulations, you'll retire from there. Such a strong reputation, you have no idea how lucky you are, is what they said to me. The past 13 years have certainly had their ups and downs. The amazing students we have at Valley View Middle School are mostly what's kept me here low these many years. They rock like thunder. And truly, it is an honor to stand in front of them each day and guide them through the perilous pursuit of learning an instrument. Each spring, when I stand in front of my students, I met with this. When their concert's over, not even they can believe what they've been able to achieve. The students we have here are fantastic. The teachers that we have here are fantastic. And the students that we have at Valley View Middle School deserve this staff, more than anything. And now, it feels as though our voices are falling on deaf ears. Staff feels disrespected, and I see my colleagues struggling with morale each and every day. I keep hearing about reaching an affordable settlement. Can we afford to lose amazing staff to districts closer to their homes that pay more of the same, crossing the river, crossing the river each morning, from what I understand, is not easy. In a recent conversation with a former staff member who left this district to become an administrator, she went on and on and on about how amazing the staff is here in Bloomington. And it's absolutely not the case where she has gone from here. Can we afford to compromise the outstanding reputation that Bloomington Public Schools has? Can we afford to be one of those places where teachers come for a handful of years only to move on to another district that they plan to retire from? Thank you so much for your time, but please consider what we can afford and what the illusion of affordability may end up costing our students and our reputation in the long run.
Chair Bartolata, can I do a summary?
Quickly.
My name is Wendy Marchak, and I am the President of the Bloomington Federation of Teachers. You have just heard from some of the teachers that work for Bloomington Public Schools. Now, I will add some facts. In 2013-14 school year, Bloomington had $33 million in the reserve fund. We passed a referendum for technology and school safety in November 2013. The state legislature increased funding by 2% the past two years and next year as well. During the last round in negotiations, the BFT experienced exactly what we're experiencing this round: low offers, extended meetings into spring. You see, it doesn't matter how large or small our fund balance is. We continue to get below-average pay increases in the metro area. What is the Listening Audience gonna hear tonight? You're gonna hear from administration that Bloomington is rightsizing the budget, and the district can't afford an average pay increase. Yet, we all know they're adding new programs and initiatives. You're going to hear that the future enrollment is declining. Fortunately for Bloomington, we still have over 10,000 students and holding steady. You will hear that the district budgeted for a 1% increase in state funding for two... a 1% increase in state funding for 2015-16, but then the legislature came back with 2% in both years. You will hear that the district's labor costs continue to rise. Like every business and household, all of us have increases in the cost of living. We came to the school board last spring because we wanted to change the tenor of negotiations, so we can stop this 10-year cycle. The district came with one-time money, while we came from a quarter of a percent from the average in the metro. Let me share the fund balances and settlements in districts surrounding us. If you'd please stand up. Edina. Edina's fund percentage is 21.35%. They offered 2 and 2, or settled. Eden Prairie, 15.69% fund balance. They offered 2.35, 2.3. Burnsville, 17.57%. They offered 2.2, 2.5. Richfield, 9.55%. They offered 2.29 and 2.18. Rosemont Apple Valley, 11.69%. They offered 2.4, 2.4. And in Bloomington, up until recently, we were at 18%, and you were offering a .75%. As of the last mediation, it is now up to 1%. 1% for both years, and that's still lower than 50% lower than the metro average of 2.2 and 2.3. Summarizing, we are surrounded by districts that have a lower fund balance, except for one, yet we continue to offer, they continue to offer higher settlements. We do not have a scheduled mediation session at this time, and we do welcome the district to initiate the next negotiation session, because we need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you all. Please be assured that the school board is committed to a fair and an affordable settlement. At the same time, our community expects us to be fiscally responsible, which includes ensuring sustainable compensation. We must not become a school system that reaches a settlement only to make deeper cuts than what we have already publicly shared. There's a topic on tonight's agenda, Administration's update on negotiation, and the board invites all of you to stay for that topic. Please do not interpret our responsibility to be good stewards of the entire school system as not valuing the great work you do. We all appreciate that. Thank you for listening tonight and sharing your time and your perspectives. Now we'll move to Part B on the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We should approve Part A.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we not? Part A. Would someone like to move approval?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Part A is our minutes, personnel items, retirements, resignations, et cetera. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Okay, now we can move to Part B. And up first is the approval of the Achievement and Integration Budget 2016-17. Someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Please.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the Achievement and Integration Plan Budget for the 2016-2017 school year in the amount of $1,953,987.63. In the event of a decrease or increase in funding from Minnesota Department of Education, the budget will be adjusted accordingly.
Thank you. Andy Kubis is here to address this. Please.
Good evening. Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, School Board Members. This resolution is something that you saw on March 28th in a study session. So since that time, there's been no changes. If you recall, we had a robust conversation at that time. There's been no changes to the budget, and Administration recommends approval.
Have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a quick comment, more than a question. Each year, I see this come in front of us, and I see how many pages it is, and how many Ts you have to cross, and how many Is you have to dot. And I understand that if they aren't all crossed and dotted, it comes back with a circle and an arrow saying, "Please fix it."
Correct.
So I just want to acknowledge the energy and the effort that has gone into this. And I know Dina's name is on this, so she's watching or listening somewhere. Thanks, Dina, for putting so much time and energy, and Andy, for making sure that this all gets done correctly.
Thank you. I deserve zero credit there. It is Dina Wade Dartley who does the work and goes through all of it. Of course, I, you know, I help him give guidance, but really, she's the expertise, and if she's not listening or watching, I'll certainly pass that along. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. That brings us to Authorization for 2016-17 General Capital and Capital Projects Levy and Community Service Funds Early Expenditures. Would someone like to move that? Go ahead, Director Bennett.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 authorized Administration to begin purchasing items needed for the 2016-17 school year. These purchases will not exceed 5% of the 2015-16 General Capital, Capital Projects Levy, and Community Service Budgets.
Thank you. Thank you. Our Director of Finance is here, Rob Zepkach.
Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board Members. This is a annual resolution. What it does is allows different departments to be able to make purchases that they need to be put in place before the summer starts, so we have the product in hands by the end of the year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 None. None.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next flavor resolution regarding Authorized Representative for the Minnesota Department of Education. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 designates David Heistad, Executive Director of Research, Evaluation, and Assessment, as the identified official with authority with the Minnesota Department of Education for the External User Access Recertification System, with authority to assign job duties and authorize external user access for MDE secure systems for Independent School District 271 Bloomington Public Schools.
Second. Thank you. And Superintendent Fujitaki is going to address this.
This is an annual requirement set by the Minnesota Department of Education, and last year, Dr. Heistad was our representative, and we recommend he be reappointed.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Just one follow-up question. Does every district have a representative this way, or is it just a few?
I think every district has one.
All right. That brings us to the Administration's update on negotiations. Too bad they all left. We are having the, our administrative negotiation team is approaching the table, and I believe there's a statement to be read.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the school board. Tonight, the district's negotiation team wanted to provide you a brief update on the contract negotiations with the Bloomington Federation of Teachers, and to answer questions that you may have at this time. We did not reach a tentative agreement with the teachers' union negotiating team at the second mediation session held last week, Thursday. At this time, as stated, there are no additional mediation sessions included. However, we remain optimistic that we can continue to negotiate in good faith, and based on the statement tonight that was read, it sounds like they're also willing to. So that's a positive. In addition to the two mediation sessions, we had eight negotiation sessions with the BFT since October 2015. It should be noted that all of our teachers and licensed staff are operating under the current contract. A contract is in place. It can extend until you reach the next agreement. While it is fairly common practice for employee unions and school systems to negotiate beyond a contract's expiration date, we remain committed to a fair and affordable statement and settlement. We believe we have provided adequate data and comparative information as a sound basis for the school board-approved parameter that we've been working with and agreed on. We believe our current contract is extremely competitive. We do value paying our teachers well, and our past contract settlements bears this out. In recent comparative analysis of new contract settlements using their 16-17 pay rates from five of our neighboring school districts, Burnsville, Eden Prairie, Edina, Richfield, and West St. Paul, Bloomington's current contract is the highest, ranging from $1 million higher than Richfield to $4.7 million more than West St. Paul in total compensation without benefits. We are $3.34 million more than Burnsville, and over $1.3 million more than Eden Prairie and Edina in cost. Regarding work to rule, I know there's been several questions about that this last week. So let me say a few words about that, since it's being raised by parents and staff. Employees who choose work to rule perform only what they are required to do by their contract, and only during the hours required by contract. There can be and often is varying degrees to which an employee may engage in work to rule practices, regardless of whether it's called work to rule, work actions, whatever you term it. We notified parents March 31st because we had received notification from the BFT indicating work actions that are aligned with work to rule practices, and the notification specifically indicated it was to inform the district, the PTSA, and families what to expect with respect to these work to rule actions. We not only have a fiduciary responsibility to negotiate for an affordable and sustainable settlement, but to also plan for impacts on our schools, students, and families when work to rule actions are taken, as has been occurring in our schools the past week. With that, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have with the district's negotiating team. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Berkestrm.
Madam Chair, thanks for coming this evening. I've been accused by my sons of being a little slow on the uptake, so you'll have to excuse me if, I think I heard the answer to my question, but I'm curious to know what led the district to send out, there was a couple weeks ago, there was an email sent out to everybody, and because we have students in the district, we received that email at our home. Can you help me understand why that was sent out?
Yes. So that was Thursday, March 31st, that that went out. Earlier in the day, we had received a written notification from the BFT indicating work to rule actions that would be occurring. Also, previously that week, principals had started to hear teachers pulling out of events such as carnivals. So when we received the notification, and upon hearing that teachers were starting to pull out from events such as carnivals, we had an attorney review, and it was determined to be a work to rule notice, based on the language that was in the, in the letter. I do have the letter. I think everybody has copies of that letter, but specifically, work to rule language was used. Participate in day field trips within our contracted time. Return phone calls, emails to parents during our duty day. We will provide limited or no support to organize or volunteer for after-school events. Participate in extended day field trips. Return phone calls, emails outside of the duty day. Anytime people start limiting those actions to contract time, it's work to rule. Now, that could, that can be all or nothing. It can be grades in between, and right now, it appears to be determined by the individual schools. I'm hearing things from various schools and not much from others. So it seems to be, you know, what the individual building is deciding at this time.
Great. Thank you.
Director Bennett.
I'm following up on that email. You said the attorney looked at it and judged it to be work to rule. Was that our attorney that?
David did look at it, and also, since I couldn't get ahold of David, and it seemed to be a pressing matter, I did contact Margaret Skelton with Ratwick.
David, can you speak to that for a minute, some language?
Sure. I mean, the items outlined in the email definitely complied with what is legally called work to rule, although I should point out that a lot of this verbiage is semantics. I mean, there is not necessarily a definition as to work to rule, or job action, or anything like that. It's, but what they had outlined was basically what is typically called work to rule. I don't know why it makes any difference what anybody calls it myself, but...
Okay. And do you know, this email that was sent, or the notification was just sent to Administration, or was it shared with principals, teachers, other staff, the notification that you received?
It was sent to Administration, and then we sent it out to principals, since it was addressed to elementary principals. And the note that we got with that was that we could share as we saw fit with people.
So has the district released that notification?
We have not yet.
So in the interest of transparency, does the district feel like doing that? Because I think there's some confusion over this notification?
Yep. I will be, I'm sure that we will be posting it.
Okay, thank you.
Thought that we had was, please feel free to share this information however you think is best. Principals can still talk with stewards for more details. It's really, you know, we can.
You had mentioned in your opening statement that our current contract is, we feel still competitive even compared to surrounding districts with their settled contracts. Two points of note, just for fun, I decided this last week to go out and just check our own work, and the contracts that I could find, and start comparing numbers, and just see, okay, over the course of 10 years, what would you make if you're in this lane, or whatever? And I, just in the 10 minutes I spent with it, it looked like we were on track, but it, from the speakers tonight, they were, one of them, I forget which one it was, said, "Help us understand why a 1% is fair." And so, to me, it sounds like there's confusion as to where, what information maybe we have versus what information they have, or what makes us feel like 1% isn't disrespectful, or isn't a slap in the face, because it sounds like they are, feel like we are punching them in the gut, so to speak, with our current negotiation. Now, you had said that we're still competitive, we're still competitive wages, even if, even with our current contract. At what point do we share more information and say, "Okay, well, here's all of the neighboring districts that you had mentioned, and this is where we fit"? You know, can we provide more detail?
Yes, we can. I have that detail, and I can post that out, too. We have a labor relations website that we have been posting communications out on topics for the sessions and updates. We can start utilizing that to get more information out, so that people can consider.
Director Bennett.
A follow-up to that one. You said, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly, that even after these neighboring districts have settled with their 2%, 2%, that we are still competitive, and in most cases, higher than these districts?
Yes.
Okay, then, I guess another question, is their contract similar? I'm like, days worked, are they pretty much all the same, or do they have more or less?
Our surrounding districts are at 184 and 185 days. We are at 180.
Okay. Is the duty day the same, or is it different?
The duty day is different. I got, in comparison to our surrounding districts, they have an eight-hour day. We have a seven-hour and 40-minute day.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just kind of wanted to go back to the work to rule question, just because I'm trying to understand, too, what... I'm trying to understand, too, what, what happened with the email, and we got a copy of that first email, and I just can't remember right now what it, what it said. I don't, I don't recall seeing it as a work to rule, but it was more like an action type of thing, right? Am I right on that one? On that first letter that you shared with us, the letter that was sent to you, it didn't explicitly said that the teachers will be going into work to rule, right?
What I stated, I think, in that was that whether you call it work actions, work to rule, work to rule actions, as David said, it's all semantics. It's all the same thing.
Right. It's all the same thing, but what I'm trying to ask is, do teachers who are taking those actions actually understand that legally it is work to rule?
I can't answer that one. I don't know what each teacher knows, or you know, or what knowledge they have of, of that. So I wouldn't feel comfortable guessing on that one.
I mean, just so you're aware, they're obviously within their rights to do that.
Absolutely. This is, work to rule is, is allowed and is a common way for, for unions to leverage change.
Right. I'm asking because there was some confusion in the community, you know, and then even parents were asking and asking, you know, is this what's actually happening? And there were a lot of different versions coming from different people, including maybe members of the, or teachers that would say, no, this is not work to rule. So there was big confusion, so just wanted to go back to that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Another question about work to rule. Sorry to beat a dead horse, but, I mean, is that actually a legal thing? I mean, it seems like this is what my contract says, and this is what I'm going to do. I mean, isn't that what most people do? Or is this unusual just in this industry?
Not in this industry, no. I mean, it's, I think, you know, we've got employees who go well beyond the workdays, and, and we're thankful for that. But work to rule is basically, it says, okay, here's the number of contract days I have, here's the time I'm supposed to be at my job, and here's when I'm supposed to leave, and that's what I'm going to do. And that, that's their right.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was an actual legal distinction, because it's like, if I was a painter, and I'm supposed to paint from eight to five, and then I show up at eight and I leave at five, no one would think that that was unusual. And they wouldn't say, well, you're doing work to rule. And so that's why I'm just curious about the, is it, is this actually like a, a legal distinction, or is my question clear?
You know, your question, I think your question is clear. Even when you have a negotiated contract, and there's specific rules indicated in contract, there's a lot of give and take on both sides, management and union, that isn't explicitly written into the contract. So both sides kind of benefit from those types of things. You say, why work to rule? Because when work to rule happens, those extras, the things that aren't in contract, go away for both sides. So that's how it narrows down at that point.
I'd like to clarify something. We received a notification from the union leadership, and we read it. We then, I consult, I asked the two attorneys, we consulted, and both attorneys came back and shared that this is work to rule action. And our practice is, whenever an administration receives information that will, might impact families and students, we feel it's our responsibility to inform them of what's up, might be upcoming, and that's what we did. Based upon the information we received from the attorney, we sent out this information. I think it was, I'm not sure how, if teachers were aware of this letter that we received from the union leadership, and I think that's what may have caused some confusion.
Yeah, just asking about the, with other districts settling at, you know, 2%, like we heard today, or over 2%, are you aware of any type of consequences as a result of, for those school districts as a result of this increase, this, this type of percentage? I mean, like, we have heard that, for example, in Richfield right now, they already have cut 30 positions. Do you know how accurate that information might be, or are you aware of other school districts where they're already talking about cuts because of that type of raise? Or for any other reasons?
Well, I know, I know St. Paul comes to mind because they publicly accepted and then turned right around and said, now we have to cut, and that's getting a lot of media attention. Rob, did you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that there's, I've talked to some of the districts around us. They're making adjustments or cuts. Edina's making cuts. They're setting, starting a community group, kind of like what we did for Budgeting for Success. They had, they're doing that. As you mentioned, Richfield, and Richfield is in the process of it. I know other districts are, you know, somewhat because it's later in the process, is that they're either spending down fund balance or reducing their fund balance, or kind of pushing off cuts to the following year to see what the legislature's going to do in the next financial year. But it's not, I mean, what you have seen in the past is districts that have given larger increases within a year or two, they've had to make substantial cuts to offset those increases.
And I also have spoken to a few districts that have, you know, with that type of increase, leveraged a pretty strong concession from the unit on the other side to give that type of increase. For example, I know one district passed 50% of health insurance costs onto members moving forward. They agreed to that. I also know another district that added time to their schedule for that, you know, in exchange for that. So sometimes a number doesn't tell you the whole story on why something is happening, or what has been given or conceded at the table to get to that number.
Now, we, just to follow up on that same question, you have shared the numbers with us, and you have shared, you know, the type of consequences our school district will, will suffer as a result of large increase. Is that type of information, information that you think, well, I'm pretty sure the, the leadership team for the Bloomington Federation teachers already have that, you know, that, that type of information. But is that something that our teachers have already seen, or has been, already been shared with them, some of that information about numbers, to kind of help them understand why we haven't gotten to that amount?
I know the district has tried a few times to present numbers and data to the BFT during those processes and at mediation.
Okay.
Chair, just, just a quick question. Sorry, my notes are kind of all over the place here, but I, I know that the folks that came and presented earlier this evening mentioned numbers of days without a contract. And Mary, you had mentioned that they're currently working under the last contract, so we do have a contract. I'm curious if you could sort of lay out a timeline of how, where did we start? How did we get from, when we started to here? If that makes sense?
Okay, sure. I will do a correction. Our day is seven hours and 42 minutes, not seven hours and 40 minutes. I forgot two minutes, so I just want to make sure I'm being accurate. So the timeline, I sent, we did have one meeting June 29th to start talking about how we wanted things to go, kind of outlay, you know, how this next negotiation session was going to go. After that point, we did not meet again until October 19th. I did send an email out August 31st, asking the BFT if they were ready to begin negotiating. They responded at that time, that they may be ready by September 21st was the first date. I didn't hear anything after that point. I did, again, then send out, by around nine, so the mid-September, they sent an email saying they wanted to, they needed time to finalize their proposal, and they suggested starting in October. So our first session was October 12th, or 19th. We originally thought about October 12th, but I actually was at a conference that day and could not get back, that was scheduled before we realized that negotiations were starting. So the 19th was the first time. We actually met after that point, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, seven times. Six of those were what I would say are, were bargaining sessions, where we were having conversations at the table and discussing agenda items and, and such. Our last session, I was not able to be at, but at that, the district did a response to a series of questions that we have been presented from the BFT about finances.
Mainly finances.
Mainly finances and reserves and that type of thing, so all around finances. That was January 25th. So a total of eight sessions since October. And then, January 28th, the BFT unilaterally moved to mediation. Our first available date after that for mediation, that everybody could make it, was March something, March 9th, March 7th, somewhere in there. Didn't write that down. And then after that mediation session, we had one more negotiation session, because our next mediation session couldn't be scheduled for a month or about three weeks, so we had a gap. So we did meet one more time on March 28th for a negotiation session, then went to mediation last week again.
March, March 8th.
March 8th was our first mediation.
Dr. Bennett.
Yeah, so I remember last spring, the teachers came for the board saying that they're ready to start negotiations now. Why is it that we didn't start last spring?
I, I can't answer that. I don't know why.
Was there attempts made on the district to start, by the district to start negotiations last spring?
I don't, I guess I don't remember them saying they wanted to start in the spring.
There was, last, before their contract was expired, so it might have been early summer, late, late spring, but they were here saying they're ready to start, so. And you said the first contact that you made with them was in June 29?
That was the first time that they wanted to meet. Yep, that was the first time.
So did you make attempts before then to try to start negotiations?
There was no talk about that between anybody. I assume it's because at the end of the school year, they're concentrating on closing the school and getting things wrapped up.
Could you sort of explain how negotiations start? Because I think it's not, you just send an email and say, hey, can we start? Isn't there like, they have to assemble their team, and they have to notify the team, or something like that? Could you explain how, like, sort of the mechanics of it, so we have a better understanding?
Both, both sides will choose their team, and we receive a notice of intent to bargain. And then, really, it is the lead negotiator's talking and trying to set up that first date.
So is the intent to bargain, does that have to come from them, or does that come from us, or it comes from either party, or how does that work?
The unit will file that, because it's an official, an official document.
So when was it that they filed that notice?
I can get that information.
Okay.
The only thing I could say that on both sides might have been the case is that since last year was a budget year, financial budget year for the state, people were waiting to see what the legislature came up with before negotiations started.
Any other questions?
I have a couple. I'd like to know, what would additional budget cuts look like if we settled at that extra, or the 2% or 2.3%?
The impact of the difference between where the district offer, her, offer of 1 and 1, and what the union is, has put on as their last offer, is about $2.5 million between the two of us, which would mean, with the other bargaining units being in this kind of same, settlement would be an additional 30 to 50 positions above and beyond the $2 million that we're already looking to cut for next, for 17, 18.
And so what about the reserves? Why can't we use the reserves to settle?
Looking at it, that we, as, as was mentioned earlier, we have, have had fair settlements in the past. We have spent down our fund balance over the last three, three years at $10.7 million. We're looking to spend down another $400,000 the next year. We just don't have the money in our fund balance to be able to sustain that type of increase without making substantial cuts to the district.
Ball up question, you're saying 35 additional staffing cuts? What would that look like? Do you have any, can you paint a picture of what that would look like?
I would say it'd be, have to be across the board, because if 90% of our, our budget is staffing, we'd have to look at it across the board of, of what that would take to, to do that. Be, be all, all parts of the district from all units, all unions, administration, everything.
Okay, so wouldn't this be 35 teachers? It'd be?
No.
Everything, but it'd be substantial amount of teachers?
We'd have to look at everything, just like we, we do on a normal basis, is looking at everything. You know, you would look at that as, we'd be looking at somewhere between five and $5.5 million worth of cuts. That'll be the most that we have had to do. I mean, and our fund balances is lower than it's been in the last four years. So this is the lowest point we've been at.
Five years.
Five years.
What would that do to our class size? Do we know what, you know, comparing right now to what our class size, and what, what is our average class size right now? If we look at that right now, and then we look in the future, thinking about cuts, cutting positions, how would that affect, then?
It would have a substantial increase. I have not calculated out what the individual class sizes are, but it would have a significant change, and I think especially at the elementary level, we would have to look at complete structural changes.
What is our average class size right now?
Our average, what the, the board has approved for ratios are 24 kindergarten, 24.71 for first grade, second and third grade, and 28 for, for fourth grade and fifth grade.
Can I ask you how, how that compares to other school districts?
We are considerably lower.
Rob? Thank you. I'm, I'm reminded that we have our, our money mind up at the table here, so can you help me understand our fund balance? I saw signs about, talking about fund balances. There's also this, this nebulous thing called committed funds. When you subtract committed funds from fund balance, what's left?
We're looking at, right now, coming into this year, we were looking at about $10 million of what is available type funds. We've committed dollars, as we've talked many times at this board, we've committed funds to transportation. We've committed funds to athletics. We've committed funds to third-party billing, keeping that within the special ed area, so that, that could be used for additional staff and additional support, support of a new nursing model within the district. So basically, we've set aside, the board has committed to setting aside funds to different areas to make them whole.
So essentially, we promised funds here. We could actually, we could go back on our promise, we could take that back?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Some people came in late, later, so I'd like to share with them some information that was covered before they walked in, so they can hear it firsthand. The first thing we started off talking about was work to rule, the work to rule issue. There's some confusion about that, and what had happened was, on, at the end of March, we received, district administration received a written message from the BFT leadership informing us of upcoming work actions by teachers. us of upcoming work actions by teachers.
We shared this with two attorneys. The attorneys reviewed it and determined it to be work to rule, a work to rule notice. And district administration practices, when district administration receives or becomes aware of something upcoming that may have a significant impact on families or students, we inform parents. And I think there was some confusion about that, about the message we received and what the teachers knew was going on, and I apologize for that. It wasn't our intent to be disrespectful, but that's what, that's actually we took. And. I'd like to make comment about, also about the fund balance issue and why using a fund balance to pay for increases. First of all, I think you mentioned earlier, and I'm not sure how many people heard this, is that when we compare our contracts to the district contracts, to our district contracts, when we compare other district contracts to our contracts, our contracts pay our teachers a higher amount than the other districts by, Mary, can you repeat the, the numbers, please?
Okay. Can I go back to my notes? So our current contract with nothing added to schedule, I compared to the five neighboring school districts, Bloomington's contract is currently highest, and when I compared, it was their sixteen, seventeen newly negotiated contracts. So, so from one million more than Richfield to four-point-seven million more than West Saint Paul in total compensation without benefits, we're three-point-three million more than Burnsville and over one-point-three million more than Eden Prairie and Edina.
So, so let me see if I understand this, so if, if we're to, if our teachers were to have these other districts' contracts, our costs would go down?
Yes.
By, in the millions?
Yep. One to four-point-seven million.
And as far as fund balance, well, we've been, we have a financial advisory committee, and what they're advised to us is that using reserves to pay for long-term costs or ongoing costs such as salary settlements is short-sighted because once those funds are depleted, how are you going to continue to make your payments? And that was from, from our citizens' financial advisory committee. And our fund balance is going down. And it's gone down by ten-point-seven million dollars over the past three years.
Correct.
And it's going to be spent down again this year to sustain our academic programming.
Correct.
And Standard is Poor's, our credit rating agency, has said that, it has cautioned us that if we continue to spend down our reserves, it may result in a downgrading of our credit rating. And reserves are needed, the case of, if the economy continues to soften, when the economy struggles, so does state's ability to fund education. When reserves, reserves allow a school district like ours to self-sustain academic programs in times when, of lean state funding. So we use this sort of as a safety net to bridge us over the tough times, and that's why all school districts need a reserve.
Chairman Chair? Okay, just trying to understand here, going back to cutting positions, you talked about seventeen-eighteen cutting between thirty to fifty positions. Are we looking at that the same way for the following years? Does that mean that we, you know, if we go up and then increase that percentage, that we're going to end up having even more cuts and in the following years?
Correct.
More positions?
Correct. We would have, we would probably be looking at, instead of where we were projecting maybe a couple million dollar cuts, you'd probably be looking at, at three to four million dollar cuts in those years.
So this is going to be for a number of years?
Yes.
Not going to stop, what looks like?
It's into the future because it's a compounding effect. You just keep growing, it keeps growing.
How much would the one percent increase in, how much does one percent more in the contract mean?
Just on this contract, it's two-point-five million dollars. If you're looking at the district-wide at the same rates, we're looking at somewhere between three and three-point-five.
I just clarified there are structural increases in this contract on top of this one percent, correct?
Yeah, yes, that's true. Each, so the teacher contract has a salary schedule that's situated on steps and lanes. Step increases happen every year automatically for them serving a year of time in the district. Lane movement occurs when they get additional education and build up enough credits to, or a different degree, like moving from a bachelor's to a master's, to go over into a different lane. For steps, our average, so ranges from two percent to seven percent increase per step on our contract. The average is right around two-point-two. About forty-eight percent of our current staff receive a step movement and, over the two-year contract. We also process about seventy-five lane changes on average a year. Our lane changes go from two-point-eight percent, or actually, one-point-two percent, up to fifteen-point-five-seven percent on a lane change, with the average is around three percent. So some people are getting automatic increases, and then when you add to the salary schedule, it adds to those auto increases.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just, I gotta ask him, again, this, I'm just trying to soak all this in. Steps and lanes are, since we're talking about surrounding districts, do they follow the same protocol, or are they all the same?
No. Steps and lanes are negotiated as part of salary into the contract. Different schools will structure their steps and lanes differently. I think the most recent really radical change, Edina, throughout, you know, the longevity steps and just went up to eighteen steps. After eighteen steps, you don't receive anything else in Edina, after you've been there and moved through those steps. On ours, we have them divided out by certain, you know, levels of education and then credits beyond that education. Many districts require higher numbers of credits to be earned before you can move on theirs. Ours are relatively low compared to some contracts around us, but it's all, it all So we, in our district, we're moving through the lanes a little bit quicker because the threshold to move to that next lane is a little bit lower than some.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Since we're on last year's contract, are the, are teachers currently, do they get their step for this year, their step increase?
No, they do not.
So they're still on last step?
Yep.
And anyone that got their additional education, could they move up lanes? If anyone got their master's degree or something like that, can they go up to the next lane?
Yes, we have been granting lane changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One thing I'd just like to add is, I can't remember who was that mentioned it from the union regarding the district using a one percent for state aid increases in our budget. We'd never used that. We used a two and a two for both years. We did that from the original budget and we did that for the projections for seventeen-eighteen. We have talked a couple times to the union about that. It still seems to not be heard from us.
Any further questions for the team?
I have one question of what was mentioned today. When the BFT mentions that the district is using money to fund other initiatives and programs, do you know what they might be referring to?
Have we heard anything at the table?
I don't think it's.
We haven't heard at the table anything specific.
Oh, okay, there, there was one of the speakers today that mentioned that the, the money, some of the money from the fund balance, I think I understood it, understood it, understood it that way, that the money was used for, to fund other, you know, initiatives and programs. I was wondering what they were referring to because they did not say it at the moment when whoever the speaker was.
Okay.
So I was just wondering if you knew, if you have heard from them, what they were referring to.
I would say not at the negotiation table, no.
Not at the negotiation table, okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Actually, since Rod, you brought up the, the state funding, so just to clarify, we got two percent last year and this year, do they?
Correct.
And are we getting two percent next year, or are we getting?
It's the, the legislature's, what they approved was, last year was a two and a two.
Okay.
So that was for fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen-seventeen.
Okay.
And they, it was a, one, a one and a one and a half the time before that, the legislature in the mid-session upped it to a two. So it, it has been a two the last three years.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, could Rod, could you share what two and two comes down to when you look at the state aid portion of our total revenue?
Our total revenue, a, a one percent is about six-hundred thousand dollars. So a two percent is one-point-two million. That's to say is if your enrollment stays flat. If you have enrollment dropping, you get less if your enrollment goes up. But we also have to look at that about seventy percent of our money is from the state. So it becomes, when you look at our hundred-and-twenty million dollars of our budget, only seventy percent is, of that money is on the one percent increase, it's not the full amount.
Rod, if we're getting two percent and only seventy percent of our money comes from the state, the net effect is a one-point-four percent increase.
Correct, on our total revenue.
Not on, just the one-point-four percent. Right. And the structural changes to our labor contracts amount to what percent? It's greater than one-point-four percent a year?
Right, the two, it's about two, two-and-a-half percent.
Right. So the structural costs of our labor just are embedded, labor cost increases exceed what revenue we're getting?
Correct.
Thank you for your time this evening.
On our agenda tonight is the Board Youth Advisory Council, and I believe Director Aliva is going to lead that discussion.
Sure, what do you guys want to do? No, all right. Yeah, I feel like last time, we sort of ended on a rough note and we're doing the same thing right here. So let's just get down to business. We had our great student, our Youth Advisory Council meeting today at five-thirty. Everyone was here. Last time, I did a, a brief presentation that sort of talked about how this isn't anything new. We've been, schools have been talking about the same exact concept for the past hundred years, and the same questions keep coming up. How do we get students more engaged? Is it worth getting students more engaged? How engaged do the students want to be? And I think what we heard tonight is that the students do want to be more engaged, or they would appreciate being more engaged. In order to get them more involved, they would like to, they would like whatever we do in the meetings to be more actionable. I heard that comment tonight, I've heard it at previous meetings, in the research that I did, I heard the same thing, or I've heard, I read the same thing, where this, where, they said, yeah, it's nice to get them together and hear opinions, but really, it's what are you going to do with those opinions and what can you say? Okay, if, if last year, and you, if they're trying to get more students involved, we say, well, last year, we did this, this, and this, until now, in your school, you can see this happen, this happen, and this happen. I think that is going to really be the key to getting them involved. So then the question before the, the entire board is, how do we want to proceed with the Youth Advisory Council? There was a couple of proposals last time. One of them was to include student reps at the board table, not board members, but board, student representatives, because they don't vote, but they could represent a student voice. Another is revamping how we do the Youth Advisory Council, renaming it to the Student Advisory Council. And then the board members that were assigned to it would be the Board Student Advisory Council Task Force or Student Advisory Committee. And, and so then, some of the questions were, does every board member need to be at all of those meetings, or should it be more like Pathways Advisory Committee or Early Education Committee, or one of the other committees where, you know, Community Ed Committee, where a board member goes, or in this case, could be the, the three task force members go, have the conversation, report back to the board? Or do we keep it where everybody shows up? And then what types of questions and how do we grab, get the questions that we're going to ask the students? And so, do we want to engage the students on things like board policy? One of the ones that I remember from two years ago when we first started this, was I brought the bullying policy and, to the students, and one of the, the responses I remember we got was, it doesn't matter what you put in your bullying policy, it's not going to change anything. And what I thought, if we wanted to get the students to have more buy-in to a policy like that, instead of having a group of us old people put it together, if we had the students come together and say, okay, this is what we would like to see, I know that there's probably legal requirements that they would have to follow, but they're smart kids, we could say, hey, you have to follow this, we're going to give it to our attorney to make sure it's, it works. You can work with our HR director. If, if the students, and I'm just throwing this out there, not saying we're doing it, but as a, for instance, if the students created that policy, that could be a tangible product that they could go back, tell their other friends, hey, last time, you know, the bullying policy that we have in place now, we made that. Oh, you don't like it? Well, then you should be on the Youth Advisory Committee and you can revise it. Oh, really? I can do that? Sure, absolutely. And now you start building this community of students who are involved, who want to be involved at a higher level, that have greater buy-in in the district. And, you know, there's all this reports that suggest you have, you know, higher graduation rates, because you have higher attendance, because you have better buy-in, and so on and so forth. So that's the, throw it out there in a nutshell, wrapping up what we had talked about last time. And so I guess we can open it up now for discussion, and considering we do have another meeting after this, maybe we can hold this to fifteen minutes.
Perfect. Director Sarn?
I think what we heard a little bit tonight and in the past, what we've done, whenever we have the middle school plus the high school, there's different issues. And I'm still favoring the concept of going to their senior high school, especially the senior high student council meetings, but having them be more than just some of their activities that they do, and having maybe two from, from the board go to this one and two from the board go to Kennedy and Jefferson and so forth like that, so that we can talk about some heavier, heavier issues. But to get them involved, I've spoken in the past to some social studies classes, and we'll do it again this spring. Once we start talking about what the board is like, how, what our membership is like on the board and some of the issues like that, some of the students are really kind of getting into that, especially the older students that might want to go into political science or just understand a little bit more about what the school board and elected officials are like. So then they might then be interested in joining the, the student council and doing some of those thoughts of, hey, what can we do as an advisory committee to the board? So I would favor that with each high school having a group or representatives with their student council. And then maybe we treat the middle schools a little bit differently, where we just meet them in a group like we have before, because they all like pizza. And, you know, to do something like that. But I think to have a little more focus on the senior high and some of their, like, when we saw the positivity effect at Kennedy, you know, they just got started into something like that, and they were kind of, kind of impressed to see us there too, so that we could talk a little bit about some of the things. So I think carrying it forward in that way, that would be, that would be my, my choice or suggestion.
You were the only one that sent me an email, so if you want to share your, your thoughts.
Well, I don't remember everything I said. I, I just know from my children's past, they were on student council, that the student council meetings are usually, you know, focused in on one event or what's coming up, and they have a lot of, a lot of work to do in that half hour or whatever they get for that meeting. And to, you know, like you're saying, the positivity thing, that was good, and it was after school, and it could go on till five o'clock, you know, whatever. But like Jefferson, they do theirs in the morning.
Yeah.
And so it's like, they don't have time to sit around and talk, you know, talk to us and. And so it's like, they don't have time to sit around and talk, you know, talk to us, and so I think that would be something we'd have to work with the student council advisor, and talk to him, or whoever, about how they want to change, you know, if they, if they'd be willing to change their focus on their meetings, maybe once a month, or, you know, something like that. But it's, that's just new to my, I didn't say that in my, no.
Yeah, I know, one of, one of the things you had mentioned was keeping the Youth Advisory Council the way we had it. One of the things we had talked about is, should just, does everybody have to go to every meeting? And you had said, well, especially if it's sort of a, an outcropping of community engagement, that's six of the seven of us, would it maybe make sense to just have everyone still go to every meeting? Does everyone still feel like they want to, that they should go to every meeting, or do you think getting an executive summary at the end is good enough?
I, I enjoy interacting with the kids, I, I enjoy hearing from them their feelings, you know, rather than an executive summary that says, you know, one of them said that, you know, I don't know.
Now I have to, like, try to keep that comment, answer in my head and remember my other question, okay, so I'll see if I can get through this. You know, I guess I could go either way on whether we go there or not, but sometimes I wonder, is it more, is it easier for them if there was only just your committee there, for them to talk about stuff, and instead of the whole school board? You know, that may be, some people may be more willing to talk. It does seem like sometimes when there's, you know, almost as many of us as students there, that, that that seems a little bit like, you know, why did we all come to this? What I would like, I do agree with what Maureen said, that, you know, going to their student council meeting in their school, when they have projects to work on, probably isn't that beneficial. But I thought the student that spoke at the meeting earlier tonight and talked about, they also have, have students that have things going on, that maybe are having issues in the building, that also the student council isn't part of dealing with. And so I would be more in having like a student forum, maybe it would only have to be maybe once or twice, at, at the high schools anyway. Have like a forum where any student could come, they don't have to be part of student council, so that, so that everybody has a chance to have their voice heard, and, and have maybe your committee listen to that. I think that would be more beneficial than going to watch, you know, like the one day I came here, and the students were working on their things for pennies for patients, that really, you know, watching them do their service project while that was good to see, it really wasn't a lot of value for communication and what their needs were with us, so.
One comment on the student forum is in our task force meeting, we had spoken with superintendent, and one of the concerns, or one of the issues that has come up, is, or questions that has come up, is, we don't want to turn it into, we have a student forum, now a student comes up to the podium and says, my teacher in this class said this, and hates the students, and we don't want to turn, we want to make sure that we avoid turning it into a, a thing where students come and complain about, about administrative issue, administrative issues, issues that should be taken care of, by going up the chain of command, talking to their counselor, talking to the assistant principal, the principal, then.
That's what I wanted to say tonight, but we were running short on time, that it's really not us that they should bring their issues to, that, you know, there are ways to get it.
Unless there's, you know, unless there were board level issues, like if someone said, the, the school rule at such and such building violates board policy XYZ, and so we, sorry, I forgot that we're still recording this. Thought we were in the study session, I'll move up, you can turn it down. Instead of having the, yeah, if a student could, could come in and say, this is the issue I have at my building, is that they're violating this board policy, that would be one thing. We want to make sure that we don't turn it into a, a situation where they're complaining about specific teachers, or say, you know, in my class, I can't concentrate because, you know, these, these students are disruptive, that, I don't know that that's a, a board level. And so we'd have to make sure that we kept it, or framed it, or if we had a specific topic, a student forum on, you know, a topic, maybe a, a board policy topic that's coming up, it could be, I don't know, gender equality, could be, whatever.
I definitely think it could be something that, that could, you know, the parameters of the conversation could be shaped ahead of time, and so that they know that. But it would also be important there, if we were contacted, to make sure that they do know to go to administration, because a lot of kids are not comfortable going to administration, and maybe there are issues that they don't talk about, because they don't feel that they can bring them up to someone there. So it'd be important to also either redirect that, or, you know, have a way for them to, for us to help them be comfortable with that meeting.
Sure.
Well, I thought all, all those high school kids that were here were very mature, responsible kids, and, you know, I think if someone came to them and said, you know, well, like they said, fix this lunch, or whatever, you know, they could go talk to the head of the lunchroom and discuss their problem, you know, I don't think they'd have a problem doing that, but whether they do or not, I don't know.
Nellie?
Okay, I, when it comes to student council, I have a little issue with that sometimes. I love student councils, councils, and, and I love to be able to hear from other students, you know, what they have to say, their opinions, how they feel, how things are going, and, you know, the, the value that they bring to the type of conversations that we, that we have, you know, through the opportunities that we provide. It is pretty obvious, when our students come and meet with us, that not everybody has been given that opportunity to be here, and not everybody has been aware of, that there's like a selected type of students, you know, it is only one, this specific group that I recommended, that I suggested directed by the student, by the teachers probably, or by some, some other person, a leader in the building. Like they said today, they say, well, our name was there on the board, but nobody else knew what we were doing, and what we were going, or where we were going, and why we were going there. And so, sometimes groups get chosen by students themselves, by popularity, you know, sometimes it's by, you know, whoever is more popular than the other, and that's just how it goes in schools, and between school, students, it's just the way it is. But I would, what I would like to see is more representation from the student body, more people having that opportunity to come and have that type of conversation with us. And when I'm talking about more opportunities, you know, if you looked around the room today, once again, you see the same issue happening over and over again, where were our students of color? There were only a couple, probably, did we have any Somali kids, any Latino kids sitting at the table? No. And sometimes we do have, we end up having one or two, right? But if we could actually hear from, from other students, and we have different groups of kids in the district, if we could find a way to maybe listen to different groups of kids at some point, the forum is a good idea, I, I support that idea, as long as we have established some parameters, so that students know that they need to be respectful also of the, of their teachers, you know, and when sometimes you don't like a, a teacher, and, and, you know, there's always, there's always somebody that's not liked by students. That, that, that's something we can avoid. But if we could really have more representation, more kids coming, and the other thing is like somebody just mentioned, is sometimes the kids do not have the time to really commit to coming to every meeting, because all of a sudden, you know, they got into baseball, or they got into soccer, and things come up, or they just got a job. So they just, they're not able to come, but if we continue to provide opportunities for everybody, we'll continue to have more people that will have that same experience, and not the same people over and over again.
I'm reminded of the Supreme Court going out to various schools during the day, holding a session, you know, where all the students are, all, and they can ask questions and so forth like that. Seeing us have a school board meeting during the daytime at one of those high schools where they, where we have some issues that we can discuss, might be an interesting. That way, every student would have an opportunity.
So coming to the end, the easy one is, instead of Youth Advisory Council, we are specifically talking about students, does anyone have a problem with changing it to the Board's Student Advisory Council? Hey, we got something. One of the things they had talked about was, they said, at the beginning of the year, we got a piece of paper that said, write your name on here if you want to participate. And some of them were like, okay, and some of them were like, I don't know what this is, keep going. And so the kids that had done it said, yeah, I'm back, because I enjoy the conversation, but a lot of kids, they didn't know what was going on. So, should we say, and I'm sure Deb will remind us, if we put this on our agenda, is that to make it an, an effort at the beginning of the school year, so at, figure out when their student governments are meeting, somebody go out to the school, explain briefly, this is what it is, this is why it's important. And, and try to get more outreach that way, and we can talk in the coming months or over the summer, if we want to target just that student council or student government, or if we want it to be a broader thing. I mean, I don't know what you do if you get 100 kids, all of a sudden, that say, yeah, I want to show up, and maybe it's great, we have 100 kids, we just have to find another venue. Or if we do want to have some way where it is 20, because when, when we did have a, a group of like 25, I thought that was actually the best, when we could get 25 to 30. And so, do we agree that maybe more outreach on our part to get the students would be a good thing?
Yes. That would be a good thing, because the majority of the students don't even know.
Don't even know it exists, yeah. Okay, so.
Yeah, Rick, I will raise my hand and volunteer to be one of those somebodies to go to the schools and, and introduce the program, and so.
Perfect.
We have our liaisons, so that each one can go to the particular school that they have.
Task force topics, or topics for the students, we had talked about everything from school lunch, go fix this lunch, to board policies. Is, are there topics that people are thinking the students should not do, off the top of your head? If the task force gets together and says, okay, this, we're going to come up with the topic for the next Student Advisory Council meeting, does anyone have a problem with the students looking at policy, or looking at?
Are you talking about the three people on the committee getting together?
Yeah, so.
First to plan it?
Yeah, so when we're planning the, the next upcoming meeting, sort of like how the legislative committee comes up with the legislative platform, brings it to the board and says, here's what we think, if no one objects, we're going to go with this. I mean, is that fine, if we do that, or, because sort of what I've been doing the last couple of years, since there's been no direction, other than just do what you want, I've just sort of been ramping it up in intensity. I just want to make sure everyone's still on board, that that's the way that we kind of want to go.
As I say, I can't think of any right now, but so can we think about that? Obviously, you're not planning the next one, and then people could send you anything that they think would be good topics, also, or things that you would prefer the, or things that board members would, don't think would be a good topic, would that be all right, have we sent that to you?
Absolutely, I mean, just like, yeah, just like any other thing, you know, like if it's legislative, you could say, yeah, I don't really think we should talk about XYZ. You know, I think we have trust in each other, but at the same time, some people think, no, students have no business talking about finance. Students have no business talking about XYZ topic, you know, let the experts do it, that's why they're students, and that's why we're adults.
But, but we're asking for their opinion, I mean, that's why we have the committee, so.
Okay.
All right.
And then, the, the last comment that you had made, and at this late stage in the game, I'm sort of agreeing, trying to get a student rep next year, might be a bit ambitious, but is anyone opposed, if we wanted to go that direction, that could be an initiative that we look at next year, talking about, and we could still do it now, but I think it, it'd be tough with 34 days of school left. Creating, you'll start looking in the fall, getting the student engaged in like, okay, if we were going to do this, how would it look, and maybe even in the spring?
I think it's got to be two. If we're going to go with.
It's got to be two students.
Right, it's got to be one for each school.
Yeah, at least two. I mean, do we think it's, do we think it's too early to, or be too fast to get it done by fall? I mean, I'm starting to feel like.
I think it's too rushed.
It'd be too fast, you've got to do it by fall.
It sounds like our three of us still have a lot of conversation to, to sort of hash out before then.
So no one's, no one is opposed to the concept, we just will put it on hold and ramp that up, maybe in August, put together a game plan of moving forward?
Well, then we should get the game plan going, if we're in agreement, why wait till August? Let's get it going, get it on paper, and agree to it, and then we can look at the calendars, see what a good time to, you know, introduce it to the students, and see, what a good time to pick a student, it doesn't have to be starting in fall, I mean, we could do it starting second trimester or something, whether we have two students on here, so it could be a November type thing, or.
We could make an attempt, I was, like I said, I'm going over and speak to Dan Sterling's class, but I don't know about juniors, to speak to the juniors, and then to tell them about what we're planning on, so that they can think about it, so that when the senior comes, I think could be the representative, or something like that.
Okay, so I think I have an action plan, we'll move forward with that, and then I think that wraps up the conversation, unless someone else has something pressing they want to bring up.
Nope.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, I would like to move to board member reports, but I would like to ask if they were abbreviated, please? Just because we have another, another setting, if you don't mind. Go ahead.
I'll go, I'll go quick. It's too bad too, because this is, this is a good one. Had an opportunity for custodial transportation negotiations to meet. Was really happy to be here for a joint meeting with city council, and school board, a great conversation about our community here. Really had a lot of fun, pancakes for breakfast over at Washburn, there was a book read by Principal Wilkins to the preschool students, we had pancakes, Director Sorm and I were there, cut the pancakes for the little kiddos, just a, just a blast to go over there and see that. Can't stress how, how impressed I was with our PTSA presentation right over here at the Oak Grove Middle. It was the Bloomington Police sharing their safety tips about drugs, about some, some opportunities to go awry for our students on the internet. A nice panel discussion, Heather Starks is here in the audience, and, and I'm not just saying this, Heather, because you're here, it is actually in my notes, I really enjoy those, those forums, I really enjoy that information, and there were a lot of people there. I mean, that's a big auditorium, and it was, it was a quarter to a third full, so I really, really appreciate the work that you guys are doing. Had a blast at the Senior Achievement Banquet, great evening, where all the seniors from, or seniors, not all of them, from Kennedy and Jefferson are acknowledges, are acknowledged for curricular excellence, artistic excellence, volunteerism, and leadership. And all of the board members are, we spread ourselves around to different tables and introduced ourselves, and I know that Director Bennett and Aliva made a very lasting impression at the table they sat at, because I saw one of the emails they sent, and whoever it was was very impressed with you guys, just able to get to know you. The board had a closed session for update on negotiations, this was a couple of weeks ago. Managed to sit in with Principal Andy Vollmuth over at Normandale Hills for pizza with the principal, and each student is chosen, they have an opportunity, essentially, they get caught doing something good. And, and they're, they're recognized and noticed for doing a good deed, and they get, as a reward, they get pizza with the principal. And, and there was an open chair, and, and Principal Vollmuth asked me if I would sit in, and I listened and learned, and watched a bunch of hungry elementary kids devour pizza. And Andy Vollmuth got up and was pouring, I think he had a bottle of Sprite, and these, these kiddos, some of them, their feet couldn't reach the floor, and they were having a blast, listening and, and learning. Quickly, my wife and I went on a date night to Valley View Middle for hairspray, where's the television, and that was a blast. So, and then, of course, our Youth Advisory Council met beforehand, and, and want to thank Rick for guiding that, so, that's as quick as I can go on.
Nellie, you got anything?
Yes, I was short. Okay, well, I attended different things, but really quickly, the town hall forum, I also attended that one, the Preventing New Drug and Alcohol Abuse, such a very sensitive topic, big concern about, around this, and are you in Bloomington, definitely, something we really need to pay attention to. And, so, thank you PTSA for that invitation, I visited Oak Grove Elementary, had a good conversation with Principal Klein, really impressed with all the good information I got, especially in regards to community engagement efforts there. Really liked that, really appreciated as well. Another visit was to Valley View Elementary, also had the opportunity to have a. have a good conversation with the principal and, um, he was, I, I won't give any more details because we don't have any time. And, um, also happened to meet with Mr. Cubas and we also had another good conversation about, uh, family engagement. And I am really glad to see, um, the way that he is working and the efforts that he's making, you know, and with the program, the initiative we already had and the way that he's trying to shape it. And I can see positive things coming out of it, so I really appreciate the work he's doing. And he knows that I'll be keeping an eye on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All the things I did, Director Bergstrom already talked about, so that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Director Sorm?
Well, me too, but then there was one more. I attended the, um, Bloomington Chamber Business Matters, Safety Matters, If You See Something, Say Something, presentation by our Homeland Security Specialist on explosives. And there was quite a crowd with the, um, Bloomington businesses and some of the schools there. So naturally, the, the safety issue came up in our schools and, and Heidi Miller from the police department and I kind of talked a little bit about all of our safeguards that we have in the schools and some of the other people from other, other cities were there also and were, um, impressed with what we have done in far as our school's safety goes. And so, uh, they're trying to get some referendum money to do some of that too, but it was really impressive that, uh, so much work is being done out at the, uh, airport except for the TSA lineups that they have, but we didn't get too much onto that. It was mainly about the explosives. And then I just want to call your attention to the April fourteenth, seven thirty to nine thirty AM at the Crown Plaza, Minneapolis Airport. There is a community conversation about becoming a successful young adult, preparing our kids for success and failure after high school, put on by the Headway Emotional Health Services Group. And, um, Chip Groth, you know, has, has been around so long and, and done that sort of stuff, but it's really interesting when we have, uh, a district judge and a, a couple of youth directors from, uh, youth leadership, as well as client services, dealing with that. So it's just another opportunity for us to learn more about, uh, what some of the other agencies and businesses around here are doing.
Okay, um, and very quickly, I'll just do, um, some of my committees here quickly. Um, the PTSA council met and the topics there were primarily around, um, actually what, what, um, everyone was talking about, the, the forum and planning the speaker series for next year and looking at some of the possible topics for that. And then the other thing was, um, uh, people from Veep came to talk about the food drive and, and talked about their partners and stuff and, and really getting that kicked off in the schools. And then, um, Andy Cubas came to talk about the learning supports and, and what they're doing there. And then, um, I attended the district diversity committee meeting and, uh, there, they reviewed, um, the achievement and integration plan and kind of the merger of the community education and, um, Office of Equity Education, um, kind of the same, I think, topic that Nellie was talking about and the work that, um, Andy Cubas has done there. So they went over, um, some of the staffing and how that, how that's looking now. And then also at that district diversity meeting, there was someone that brought, um, a flyer here, uh, that Pacers National Bullying Prevention Center is having the Unity Awards and they will actually have a Unity Awards on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, at the Bloomington Center for the Arts. And they will honor and celebrate a few individuals and groups who have made outstanding contributions to address and prevent vote bullying, whether it's building awareness of bullying prevention, inspiring, empower others to take positive action, or advocating for those who need support. And then, um, they have a big, long website here, but I'll just say, you know, you can probably contact Pacer and find out. But I also wanted to make sure that they are looking for people that will share their story, that you can nominate somebody for that Unity Award. So, um, clearly there's a lot of educators and students within our schools that we could possibly nominate for that, so.
Thank you.
And then I spent one day last week also in mediation, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to turn over the superintendent.
I'll pass.
Okay. Any other news, or any other things to come before the board tonight? No? Thank you, we are adjourned.